We what?
We got five. Three would be a majority.
Yeah, three. I mean, we've got a corner.
We have a corner of three? Now that we don't have a member?
We're only missing two.
If you, if we have, yeah. If, if you have a three to two vote.
Oh, 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 I understand.
We're missing two members.
Yeah, I had a discussion with Bob before the meeting that I have two applications on my desk right now.
I was gonna say, you know, the board can, uh, because the mayor has not appointed, the board could appoint.
Got one today, actually. That, uh, absolutely. I don't have them with me, though.
But I was just telling them, the board can appoint.
After 60 days?
Yeah.
Russell Earl's been gone 60 days, but...
Pretty close. Well, I know that Bill Cromwell, Earl, uh, Paul Felsen, I mean, it doesn't have the Earl spot. We've got two open right now.
But with that said, any time that you all know of somebody that you think would be a good fit for the Planning Commission, please forward him to me. Anytime you have, you know, somebody that would be a good fit, you think, for the Planning Commission, please forward him to me. We're always looking for good board members.
Some have managed to lose one. You can't hand out anything.
Who?
Are we ready, are we?
I'll call this May 6, 2013 meeting. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Steve, would you call the roll, please?
Yes, sir. Crisilius?
Here.
Shramke?
Here.
Shadle?
Here.
Wade?
Here.
Chairman Manchester?
I move that the reading of the minutes for April 15, 2013, be waived and that the minutes of said meeting is prepared by the secretary be approved as written.
Second.
Senator Crisilius, any additions or corrections or comments? Call the roll, please.
Shramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Bobby, you have the motion for the amendment to the development plan to pass over. What's your point?
I do. I move that a resolution entitled "A Resolution Constituting the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Amendment to a Development Plan for Property Located at 7, or excuse me, 2781 West Park Drive" be removed from the table.
Second.
Who was that seconded by?
John Shadle.
Also, if everyone could possibly bring their microphones a little bit closer.
This is my fault, not yours. This is a motion to take from the table as shown as an item of business, but we did, I don't remember if we postponed it till tonight or not. We did, didn't we?
I believe we did, yes.
Okay. You want to continue it again?
No, I'd, I'd like to have this heard tonight, if possible.
Let's take it from the table to make sure we didn't, uh, end up boo-boo when we labeled it last time.
According to the minutes, we did remove it from the table and then we put it back until today.
Okay, well, it's then already on the agenda, and if you withdraw your motion and, and your second, then we'll proceed to discuss the amendment to the development plan. Is that all right? Can we do that?
Yes, that's fine.
By your consent. Okay, it's before us to amend the development plan, and as I recall, there were some additions and corrections to be made. You want to enlighten us on what's been done?
Actually, Steve, you want to go ahead?
Go ahead.
Uh, I, I don't know that there have been any changes made since this was originally submitted. Correct me if I'm wrong, Steve. I think, uh, it was, engineering was waiting on my final engineering plans to get submitted before this could be heard, I guess, at, at the commission. So now that that is complete, we, we're bringing it back for the, you know, on the agenda for tonight. But no, there wasn't any changes made on this plan from the, from the original that was submitted.
If I may, a little bit more on this. When we originally brought this before the Planning Commission, this is to, really to amend a development plan standard that the building needs to set back no more than eight feet from the right-of-way. But before, we wanted the Planning Commission to actually act upon this. We requested that the engineers submit stormwater management plans and further civil engineering type of information that would substantiate what they wanted to do as it relates to stormwater management. So now they've done that, and our engineers have looked at it. We're still going to request a few changes, but I think we're satisfied that what they're proposing to do, as far as that building pad and that general location, will work. So at this time, we're, we're requesting that this plat be released for consideration from the Planning Commission.
Do you have a copy that we could look at? Because I'm guessing that several of us do not have our copies from the last time of year.
Absolutely.
And I have a question about water detention. There's a huge water detention area. Are you planning on removing, what is your plan for water detention, I guess, would be there?
Actually, the existing detention pond, the plan is to reconfigure it onsite, and that is, that was the main component that, that engineering wanted to see and, and kind of make sure would work before we went any further. And they have done their initial review on that. On the plan you have, it just shows basically the outline of the new drainage easement. But the, the pond will stay onsite, it'll just be reconfigured.
Okay.
It's just gonna be right here? Mm-hmm. Right now, that existing pond...
Goes way out here, I know. That's the reason why I was asking that. So it's gonna become a much more narrow detention?
It's, it's narrow out front, yes, and it's, it's larger down on the west end of the property, and it's also slightly deeper to make up for, you know, no net change in volume from what's there now.
All right. So this is all gonna be water detention out here, or just?
That's correct.
Just this section?
The narrow end, and then also, yes, where Dan's pointing at.
All of this?
Yes.
Okay.
Now, it's gonna be an L rather than what we see from the road.
Exactly. Exactly.
Now, okay, we have, um, you, you have an outline of the easement, but it would, it would encompass more than that easement?
No, 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 the, the easement is, that's the limits of the detention pond.
It would not come out here, it would just be there. It would just come down here. So we were looking at this, thinking that it was gonna come out here.
Yeah, it does. The, uh, the outlet of the existing pond is right in this area. That won't change.
Right.
But this is widened, and it's now, it was basically like this.
Right.
And now it's gonna be widened into this area, and that part will be part of it as well, but the out of the point remains exactly the same.
Okay. So, so we will have water here? Ponding there, yes. And here.
Correct.
It's deeper here than it is here, it slopes up there.
Yeah, this is a slope up to where the pond is, and it drops off into the outage.
The engineer and the applicant will have to come back to the Planning Commission here, probably within the next two weeks, month or so, with a waiver plat to establish those easements, is that correct?
That's correct.
It's just a concern, the more rain we seem to have all the time, you know, it's certainly considerations.
Well, yeah, the, the stormwater, the detention design, I mean, it's, it really is, for the most part, unchanged, as far, whatever's there now, we have to provide again, so that...
Same volume, yes.
Exactly.
Is there a capacity for, then, the development, some of that going from grassy area to?
Yeah, all that's taken into consideration, I believe, on the original development plan for West Park, it accounts for, I believe it's 85% of each lot can become impervious when developed, uh, so that's, that's what this was designed for as well.
That's calculated in, and there's still sufficiency in the retention area?
Exactly. So to be honest with you, there's so much that's still undeveloped, until all of that gets developed out, there's probably not ever gonna be a whole lot of water standing in that pond anyway. But, but it is accounted for, for when that time does come.
The only interest to this is on, um, West Park.
That's right.
That's correct.
Motion to remove, so...
It's not far in.
Who did that one?
I'm sorry.
I'm Bob. I'm Wade.
Okay, thank you.
But there was no vote on it.
Let me ask a very, oh... Is that what you are going to bring back cannot be put on this, or could not have been put on this document, without difficulty?
Uh, no, it'd have to be two separate documents to enter. This one would be a development plan amendment, which would correct, like, the building setback lines and stuff, but then also a waiver would be to create, or abolish the existing drainage easement and create a new one, and, and also, there's some other stuff, like, there's a utility easement that we were gonna abolish and create as well, and so that would need to be, uh, done on a waiver of subdivision.
That's good. Thank you. This is not the original, or is it?
Yeah, that's the original.
I'll give that back to you. Call roll, Steve.
Wade?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Shramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Kathy, you have the Bergfield Amendment to the Development Plan at 3512 Clark's River Road.
I move that a resolution constituting the final report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the proposed amendment to a development plan for property located at 3512 Clark's River Road be adopted. Second.
Y'all have any questions? My impression is vacuum, vacuum stations.
That's right, and there's 14 vacuum stalls being installed on the sidewalk, and some striping, and that's about it. I don't believe there are any now.
Thank you. Y'all have any questions of anybody?
Staff note on here tells us that the egress will be improved, improved how? How is it now, and what is going to be improved?
The, uh, vehicles that are, are exiting the wash can, uh, exit out the new property, the existing entrance, it's over on the, I guess, the west side, or instead of having to come back through and go back out the, this is ill...
Is there...
Go back out the existing entrance now.
Is there some reason for 14 rather than 20, or eight?
Based on value.
Based on value. Okay, and, and these stations, as they're called, um, I didn't understand the answer, I'm sorry, but you all have to pull in to each one of them, or back into each one of them?
No, you'll pull into them, the, I think she was talking about the ingress and egress being improved. Currently now, the traffic that enters the, the car wash lot, you know, circles around to the right, comes back through the car wash, and then has to come back out the same entrance, um, and it's tight and congested and everything else, but now they can exit out through this adjacent property.
Okay. So there's not any additional ingress or egress, it's just with the additional property that allows for a second?
An exit. That's right.
So they'll pull in, and then when they get through, they'll pull out to the left?
They'll pull out to, well, it'd be the...
It'll be to the...
Away from, away from the car wash.
Yes, but they also would have the opportunity, if they wanted, I don't, there's not gonna be any barrier there, where there's existing two parking spaces now in a, in a painted area, that's gonna be gone, so they could come to the left or right.
They could.
They could, yes. And also, the vacuum stalls, I think, I believe they're pull-in, and they're also the 14 by 20, our standard size parking space for not bagged or bulky goods is nine by 18 in the city, 20 for hotels, motels, so this is gonna have an additional four or five feet in width.
A question that I have for you, those stalls, are they covered? Are they just with stations where you just drive in and vacuum and drive out?
It's partially covered, similar to as you go into McDonald's and you order it, it's a small little...
Yes.
It's the same concept, and the material interaction, maybe, is a, you know, this open mesh, that you, you purchase it as a full station.
I see. I see. Okay. And they are drive-through, I mean, you can drive right out and then go right out that exit, correct?
You pull up to the station, the vacuum canister will be in front of the nose of your car, and that'll be posted on both sides, and then once you're done vacuuming, you'll turn back, and you'll back out, just because you went into a parking space up to the front of the sidewalk of a certain hall or area. So you pull in when you're finished vacuuming.
So you can't pull straight out because you're gonna share a space?
Correct, absolute, and not only that, it helps control the flow of water.
You could also back in each of the stalls, too.
I'm sorry?
You could also back in the, each of the stalls, if you chose to.
If you chose to, you could, um, yeah, yes.
I just wanted to make sure, I didn't know if they were drive-through, what the circulation was gonna be, so you've answered that question.
The nose will be up to a sidewalk that'll have a six-inch elevation.
Thank you, ma'am. Call roll, please, Steve.
Yes, sir. Crisilius?
Aye.
Shramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Shadle, you have the application for amendment to development plan by Evelyn Jupp, indeed?
Yes. I move that a resolution entitled "A Resolution Constituting the Final Report of the Paducah Planning Commission on the Proposed Amendment to a Development Plan for Property Located at 2721 Park Avenue," park, West Park Drive be adopted.
Second.
Senator Crisilius? We're kinda reverse here from where we normally are, we're normally trying to get less, and now we're gonna say we want more. Increasing it from an eight-foot, to a 25-foot, uh, foot, that back.
In this particular application, the client, the doctor, wants to separate her client from working staff parking areas, so the back parking lot to the west will be dedicated to staff front spots or for clients.
And in the, and another business, I think you said somewhere, like a pharmacy or something?
Well, she does a little bit of retail sale for cosmetics and other products, some of you may know her lines a little better than I do, and this includes a drive-through space on the north side of her building, and that's the, I don't know how you want to describe it, the island, the landscaping island there forms the separation for the drive-through. Now, we are proposing to use the existing drive that is on the south side of the, the post office property, best describe it that way, Steve?
Mm-hmm.
They are gonna use that existing drive, that, that drive is on her property, but has been used by the adjacent property for some time, to avoid additional curb cuts and any disruption along the street frontage on West Park Drive.
It'll be shared access.
Yes. With, with some improvements as necessary there. I think it gets just a little wider.
Steve, has the, um, notations been made that you noted on your report? Add the north side setback line to 25, and the south to 10?
Yes, it is, you'll see that your plat should even reflect that, where it says, can I see your plat real quick?
Certainly.
Thank you. Any other questions? Call the roll, please.
Yes, sir. Shadle?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Shramke?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Ryan, you have the Free Spirit Motorcycle Ministry, Inc., application for waiver of subdivision for six lots?
I have that.
Bob, you have that?
Yes, I move that this commission receive and file the application of the Free Spirit Motorcycle Ministry, Sander Vassar, and the Paducah Housing Authority for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 2300, 2310, 2312, 2314, 2316, and 2322 Bridge Street. I further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second.
Senator Shramke? I was reading my notes. So this is gonna be one big lot?
Yes, sir.
Well, not a lot, it's 1.64 acres.
Mm-hmm.
Which is one lot.
So Track D1 is currently vested with the Paducah Housing Authority?
That's correct.
And, as well as they're giving up a small corner up in the top, is that right?
Uh, that Track D2, they will be retaining that track, that will remain with the Housing Authority. That area encompasses a, a portion of a playground area. Uh, you can see on there where we've got it labeled decorative metal fence, uh, that's a fence around the playground area, and that's being retained by the Housing Authority.
Anybody have any more questions? If not, Steve, would you please call the roll?
Yes, sir. Wade?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Shramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Shramke, do you have the item 1305064? Does anyone have that?
I have that, no, I'm sorry.
Huh?
I have, uh, I have that also.
Wade?
Go right ahead, Mr. Commissioner.
I move that this commission receive and file the application of Davy Naps for the proposed re-subdivision of property located at 425, 429, and 431 Barnes Street. I further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived.
Second.
Don, thank you very much. Any discussion or questions?
Correct.
Any...
Wade?
Aye.
Crisilius?
Aye.
Shramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Kathy, you have a Cheryl, Elston or Houston?
Yes, sir, I do. I move that this commission receive and file the application of Cheryl Houston for the proposed public utility easement to be established at 5180 Ogilvy Avenue, or further move that the requested approval be given and compliance with all other applicable provisions of the Paducah subdivision ordinance be waived. Second.
This plat basically is, um, just establishing, uh, public utility easements at the request of some of the utility companies. Um, we've got a easement that will cover sewer for JSA, and then, uh, the easement that you see on either side of the private drive and cutting across the cul-de-sac of the private drive, that will accommodate for, uh, uh, power and, uh, gas easement, as well as a portion of the JSA sewer easement.
Typically, um, these easements would have been established as part of a subdivision process, but with this development, it was multiple principal structural approval, which the Planning Commission gave, so that did not go through that process.
I recall hearing on some other property up on Pecan, that the lady who lived across the creek had advised us at that time of some flooding problems from the creek. I'm just recalling that. I don't think it is, it's an issue here, but are these houses down towards the creek? I don't think it is, it's an issue here, but are these houses down towards the creek built higher than the other ones for any? Or they all be on the same elevation, other than the ground?
Uh, the units that are closest to the creek, uh, are being elevated to this, uh, pretty much same elevation as the other units that are on this property, on the site here. Uh, there might be six inches or to a foot, maybe difference in finished floor elevation.
I didn't mean throw that at you as a curve ball, I just, through the creek there.
Yeah.
And everybody's conscious of those things now.
Yeah, that was, you know, the, the stormwater and the drainage of that creek was looked at very heavily in the site design of this property.
Which way does the sewer go back there, because I?
Uh, I think it is flowing from, well, the line that we're tying into runs parallel with the, uh, abolished section of Deer Lick Place, and it runs down to the, to Crook Creek, and then follows Crook Creek on down.
Any other questions? Staff has recommended, uh, that the easement be established. You wanna call a roll, Steve?
Yes, sir. Crisilius?
Aye.
Shramke?
Aye.
Shadle?
Aye.
Wade?
Aye.
Chairman Manchester?
Aye. Any other business? Thank you all. Stand adjourned.